Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is May 4th, 2022. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge allegiance by Councilmember Shepherd.
Heavenly Father, thank you for our new firehouse in District Two and continuing to bless our city. Please, we ask that you remove the evil forces that are instigating war abroad and touch the misguided souls in our country as well. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, a free, republican, righteous state, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmembers Nelson and Tate have asked to be excused, and I will mark them so. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Cosden?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Six present, two excused.
Okay, Item Five is Changes to the Agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, or do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I respectfully request to withdraw Consent Item 9A4 for today's agenda for re-accept.
Okay, any other changes to the agenda? Can I get a motion to?
Second.
Motion to approve as amended.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I also would like to pull item, Consent Item 9A3 from the consent agenda for a brief staff presentation.
Yes, sir. So the only real change, other than the point of that one item, is to withdraw the consent agenda 9A4, and I think the motion reflects that?
Yep.
Okay, Madam City Clerk?
Second agrees.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Item Seven is Approval on Minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of April 20th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to Item Eight, Citizens Input Time. It's a maximum of sixty minutes. It's set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record, and we'll utilize the podium to the left in front of the double doors. Sir, how are you? We're going to use the podium. Carl over here?
It's going to take me a while to get there.
Yes, sir. Is there anybody else that wants to come forward? Okay, Carl, we'll wait for you.
Hi, my name is Carl Vola. I reside at 3705 Southeast Third Place, Cape Coral, Florida. I've been here since 1940, when there were three traffic lights. I'd like to talk to the mayor and esteemed council about a couple of environmental endeavors. You know, for standing, I've won sixteen awards for my environmental efforts. My latest one was from my University of Northern Colorado for my work environment. They gave me esteemed award from the university with a seal on it. So I think I have some standing. First of all, I'd like to talk about the old golf course. The old golf course has been languishing for too many years. Something must be done, and it must be done now, because prices are rising on land. Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife started out, we were paying $10,000 a lot. Now it's up to $25,000 to $35,000 a lot for the same old lot. I respectfully request the council to consider putting it on the ballot this year. I think it will have no trouble passing, because Amendment One passed with seventy-six percent, and 2020, the land that the county buys through 2020 passed with seventy-eight percent. So I think it will pass. And I request, too, that it might be a green area. You know, we need more green areas. We need balance with the wildlife and city growth. The city growth is outstripping our wildlife, and if this happens, we won't have any. So if you like the eagles on the golf course, the bobcat, the rabbits, quail, whatever, it has excellent fishing lakes. I fished the lakes years ago, and the kids would enjoy that. You know, there's thousands of houses surround that where the kids can fish. So this is what I request, that you officially put it on the ballot this year, because prices might even go up higher with the land boom we're having right now. We don't know this, but I think this will happen. The second thing I'd like to talk about is we need an environmental committee within the city, just like a planning committee made by people out of the town. You know, we need an environment for balance and for continuity with the city. For example, we bought over, we bought fifty-seven lots at over $600,000 with Gopher Torres and Boring Alphane.
And wrap it up, Carl.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to one citizen's input, please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Any council discussion on citizens' input? Anything I'll say first? Carl, I would suggest possibly sitting council individually your concerns. I know that three minutes is a little restrictive at some time, but please feel free to send an email that maybe outlines what your concerns are or set up meetings with council to discuss those concerns on a one-on-one basis. As far as the old golf course is concerned, I really believe that this council has a desire to possibly look at purchasing the golf course. Unfortunately, there's some environmental issues that need to be addressed first, and that's not in our court, that's in the seller's court, that they have to make sure that they meet certain FDEP requirements, and that's what we are waiting on. We really can't do anything until that initiative is completed, and we're not there yet. So that's where we are with the old golf course. So we're just waiting on the property owners to do what they need to do to make sure it's a good site for purchase. If we happen to purchase the lot in the condition it is now, we might bear a lot of liability that comes along with it. So that's why they have to mitigate any environmental issues first.
May I have a question?
No, sir, but you're more than welcome to contact me to have this discussion at any time.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other discussion from any council members? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Item Nine, 9A, is the consent agenda. I'll now open up the consent agenda to pull any items. As the City Manager mentioned, he would like to pull Item 9A3, correct, Mr. City Manager? And is there any other items that council wants to pull? If not, is there a motion to approve the remaining balance of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, I'm going to call the roll on those items.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, as far as Resolution 90-22, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I'm going to ask Jeff Pearson, your Utilities Department Director, to come to the podium. He has a quick overview of the item that's before you today. And the item that's before you is basically a contract award to allow us to proceed with the project known as the Calusa Hatchie Connect reclaimed water transmission line, which is a partnership between the City of Cape Coral, the City of Fort Myers, and also the State of Florida to help us address water quality issues in our region. I think it is perhaps one of the most significant water quality projects that exists in southwest Florida, because it allows us, in working with the City of Fort Myers, to redirect water that the City of Fort Myers would otherwise release into the environment, either through deep well injection or other means, and allows them to transmit their reused water to the City of Cape Coral, where we can use it to supplement our irrigation water system. And so I'd like Mr. Pearson just to, again, walk you through this project for the benefit of, to help educate the public and allow the public to understand the importance of this project that the city is undertaking. Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Sitting Manager, Mayor, Council. This project resolution, this particular item is Resolution 90-22. We're seeking approval to award a contract to Amisi Engineering Contractors LLC for the project in the amount of $11,669.69 and 60 cents, with a city-controlled contingency of 10% for a total project cost of $12,836.66. And authorize the City Manager or designate to execute the contract and purchase orders. Just to get started here on the brief presentation, in June of 2021, we received the initial bids for the sub-aquous portion of the project. In August of last year, the bid was contested, and then we rebid the project last month. So far, beginning in March of this year, the upland portion of the project began. That started in Horton Park and is moving west to the Everest Water Reclamation Facility as we speak. Some of the grants we've received go back quite a ways. We first received a grant, State Appropriations Grant, for $790,000, and then we've received a number of grants since then. I won't go through all of them, but we've received to date over $10 million for this project, and we anticipate potentially getting more for this project as well. The interlocal agreement between the City of Fort Myers was signed in 2018, and basically it requires the City of Fort Myers to upgrade their south advanced wastewater treatment facility to be able to produce reclaimed quality water and requires the City of Cape Coral to construct the pipeline. Also, the agreement stipulates that the pipeline be able to handle up to 12 million gallons a day of water from the City of Fort Myers, but during the dry season and contractually, we have to buy 6 million gallons a day for seven months out of the year. Also, Cape Coral improvements are going to be, they're originally going to be completed in January. Now that timeline has been extended because of the bid protest. We're looking at, based on this contract, which is essentially our, the longest path of our critical path, puts us in substantial completion in August of '23. Here's a map showing the project. The blue line, we're staying south of the midpoint bridge and then tying into the City of Fort Myers plant and the City of Cape Coral's Everest plant. Some of the purposes and needs for this project include, of course, the obvious one. It provides more reclaimed water for our irrigation system. It will help us with our fire protection services with all the fire hydrants that we have. It helps maintain our freshwater canal levels, because we're, it's going to put less stress on our freshwater canals by being able to use an alternative water source. And for the City of Fort Myers, it's going to help everyone, not just the city, by reducing the nutrient discharges currently being discharged into the river. Approximately, according to their permit, they can discharge over 100,000 pounds of nitrogen per year and about 16,000 pounds of phosphorus. So this is one more step in helping improve the water quality of the river. So this project really has, it's a regional, it has regional impacts to our whole area by improving the water quality in the river for all those that live in southwest Florida, not just Cape Coral and Fort Myers. And also, it allows the City of Fort Myers to dispose of their reclaimed water in a more environmentally friendly way, rather than putting it in the river or sending it down a deep injection well, which those are very expensive, and you can never recover that water once it's injected. Here's some specifics about our project. The length of the pipe underneath the river is approximately 7,300 feet. And also, we will be putting in a tank there at the, a pressure tank at Horton Park. It'll be fenced in. That's a picture of what it will look like. It's not a huge tank. Of course, we'll try to disguise it with some landscaping. And that also will be updating the header system at the Everest Water Reclamation Facility, which will allow us to either send the water directly into the city's irrigation distribution system or store it in our storage tanks or put it down a deep injection well. Because part of the agreement was, one of the benefits of the agreement to Fort Myers was allowing, instead of them building another deep injection well, we would use ours that is capable of disposing approximately 18 million gallons a day of water and that we rarely use. In the past year, I don't even believe we've had to use that well. So we might as well start using it and use it for a good reason, which is helping Fort Myers get out of the river and helping the City of Cape Coral. Continuing on about the project, the, we're going to be using fusible PVC pipe, and this project is billed potentially to be the largest and longest horizontal directional drill using that material in the United States. And this is just another map of the project showing the, the yellow line is the open cut portion. The blue line is the horizontal directional drill area, and the green dots are where the drilling rigs will be put in. They're going to be drilling on both sides of the river. They will be going down approximately 100 feet below the river, so as not to impact the river, and they will meet and pull the pipe back through once the drills meet in the middle. Some of the things that will occur that the public can expect at Horton Park is that the public restrooms will remain open during construction. Horton Park, including the playground, will close during the horizontal directional drilling work. The boat ramp and the walking path are anticipated to remain open, except when the fused pipeline is being installed under the Calusa Hatchie River. And that's all I have, and I'm available for any questions that you may have. I also have Bill Sperry, who is the project engineer on this project, and will try to answer anything you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I agree, this is probably a project and a partnership throughout our region here that's probably going to be one of the biggest environmental impacts that we can do. So I'm glad to see this project finally moving forward. It's not only going to help our city, it's going to help the City of Fort Myers. And regionally, I think it's going to help our environment, and I think that's why we've gotten the $10 million in grant money since 2017. I think the state recognizes how important this project is for our region as well. Any other discussion from council on this? Or do I have a motion to approve Resolution 90-22?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seeing no discussion, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Item, thank you, Mr. Pearson. Move on to Item 9B, Appointments to Boards and Committees. We have youth council appointments tonight. We have seven junior vacancies on the youth council, and we have one senior vacancy tonight on youth council. And we also have seven junior applicants, and we have one senior applicant for these positions. Is that correct, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, council was able to interview, at least most of council was able to interview most of the candidates last week. In my opinion, they all interviewed extremely well, and I'm excited to bring this group in with our current group of upcoming seniors. And excited about the future of the council as well as we move forward with, with this group helping plan the future of the city through their eyes. So at least based on my discussions, I will make the motion to approve all eight, the seven, for the junior vacancies and the one for the senior vacancy.
Second.
Is it, any further council discussion? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, do I have council's permission to place any applicant that, in a random order? Because sometimes I had more than one applicant for the same school. Is that all right? So I have three, like, for Oasis, and randomly I can select the Oasis representative, and the other two will be placed in a school that I have not received an application.
Except, but remember, the ordinance we changed took the school specification of the school away from that.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Item 9C, Unfinished Business. Follow-up items from council. Does any council member have any follow-up items? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item 9E, Personnel Actions. 91 is council office personnel item. I put this on the agenda for two reasons. Number one, I just wanted to update council. If you're not aware, the position that we have open in our office for a staff position, Legislative Executive Assistant. We had a application period that ended last week. We had a total of 93 applicants for the one position. With the help of the HR department, we had the applicants reviewed by the HR department to make sure that they met the minimum qualifications. Not all 93 met those qualifications. The ones that did were given a skill test that they could take online. And as a result of that, we have 20 viable candidates that are left out of the 93 applicants. So the 20 applicants that we have, just like we had in our previous discussion, I believe there's four council members, which would be Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Welsh, Councilmember Long, and Councilmember Cosden, along with Ms. Grillen in our office, my assistant, will do Zoom meetings and interviews with those 20 applicants. And as a result of that, we will narrow the pool of individuals down to five. I will mention, we have one member or one applicant that is an internal applicant, that is a city employee now. And also, we have one individual who meets the qualification of the veteran applicant in the policies that we have for that. So I think for me, we narrow it down to the five people plus those two individuals. So that would be a total of seven. And I just wanted to bring that forward to see if that's how we want to move forward. Once we get it down to those five individuals with those two other applicants, then we can set up interviews, what was classified as a round robin type interview with any other council members, and then we will score those individuals from there as well. So the four council members and this, my assistant will grade those individuals and narrow it down to the five plus the two. And then we'll have interviews with all of council collectively to narrow it down to the individual that we will recommend and offer the position to. So I just wanted to see if there was any, any questions at this point, but I believe that's how we decided to move forward, but open for suggestions from here, if anyone has any. Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you, Mayor. Did I hear you say that twenty, interviewing the 20 applicants, the four council members will interview the four? members will interview the four?
Yeah, by Zoom or, or telephonic, however.
Group or individually?
Well, you can't do it by group, you'll have to do it individually. So, the four council members, uh, my understanding is my assistant will sit in, uh, with one of the council members, uh, because there's not a sunshine violation there, and, uh, she can do the, uh, do the interview with them as well to, to do the ranking that we're trying to develop, uh, and, uh, I think HR is gonna help us, uh, with the questions and the ranking.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so we are all doing it evenly, uh, when we do the interviews, and wherever the top, top five out of the twenty, uh, land, that's where we'll land for, for the next step or round two of the interviews.
So each candidate will meet with four different council members for their first interview?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm a little uncomfortable, nervous about doing twenty interviews. I think, I think the way we did this when we hired the last, um, employee, James, if I recall, because I was the office manager then, I think we got these applications, like these twenty applications, and the ones that were responsible for hiring pulled out the top applications that they wanted to interview, maybe ten or so, and so I'm just worried about the amount of time and energy that's gonna go into interviewing all these people, not just for us, but for them too, going through four interviews, and that, so I just wanted to put that out there. I'll do, I'll do it this way if everyone agrees, but...
Yeah, I, I don't think any of us, uh, thought we would have ninety-three applicants.
It's crazy.
Um, and I've, if I recall correctly, uh, and if HR is here, maybe they can, uh, enlighten us a little better, but I think out of the ninety-some applicants, only around sixty actually met the minimum qualifications, and as a result of the testing, I see Lisa, uh, walking up to the podium, so she may be able to give us a little better insight of the, of the equation there, uh, but, uh, we had, uh, met, and we, I know we talked as a council, so since we had this magnitude of, uh, applicants, we would've changed the process, I think now will be the time. Um, so Lisa?
Lisa Sanego, Human Resources Director. Yeah, most certainly, if you want to pare down and, uh, Councilmember, Councilmember Cosdine, yes, there was a, a smaller group that was like, okay, say you have twenty, twenty-five at this point in time, if you want to just pull from that and do the ten or eight, uh, to do the first round of interviews, and then those four do what you had just explained, that process, and then it's, uh, just a smaller number you're working with, and our HR department can look through that as well and, uh, help pare it down a little bit. Um, we look at public sector and other factors that may go into having some that rise further, you know, closer to the top, so...
And it's my understanding with, uh, city policy, the individual who is a veteran and the individual who is a city employee, they are, they must be given a, an interview somewhere in the process.
Correct. Our internal culture is that we, uh, do want to interview our internal candidates, et cetera, and give them that, uh, career opportunity to look, to look at that position, um, and compete for that, and then, uh, veterans, right, by, uh, Florida statute, uh, that reach this level, uh, receive an interview as well, and maybe, they may be part of that pared down ten, um, or so, uh, but we, well, certainly we'll make sure that they are in the mix.
Okay. So I think the question is, we have twenty applicants, how do we wanna move forward? Uh, do we wanna continue with the method that we originally said we did, or do you wanna narrow it down from there? Uh, so I'll open up the floor. Uh, anything else, Councilmember Cosdine, before I move on to other council members?
No, I'm gonna hear what my colleagues have to say, and then I'll know what I wanna do.
Okay. Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was briefly able to look through some of the twenty, uh, applications today, and I can tell you that it won't be too hard for me to pick ten out of those twenty, because doing twenty individual interviews, to me, is gonna be too much time, uh, so I'd like to bring it down just by reviewing the resumes to ten and commit to doing ten Zoom interviews or phone interviews, but I could certainly rank them one to twenty, and then maybe if we rank one to twenty, we take the top rankings of the top ten, instead of just, uh, going that way, and we could have HR review our one through twenty, highest numbers, one through ten, get to the next round. So I'd prefer to at least get it down to ten before any sort of phone or direct contact with the applicants.
Okay. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I would recommend allowing Human Resources to pare that list down to ten and then conduct your interviews from there. I think trying to schedule twenty people with the council schedules will be, um, very difficult. Um, so I would at least, uh, use the expertise of Human Resources and, um, have them take that list down to ten and take your interviews from there. Thanks.
Yeah, I would have to agree with Councilmember Welsh. I think the, uh, the burden, uh, since this is a position in our, in our department, the burden should be left on us, uh, to come up with that ten, if it, say, so I kinda agree with Councilmember Welsh, if we wanna narrow it down further before we do an open interview, uh, I like the ranking of one through twenty, and, uh, the four council members and, and my assistant can do the ranking one through twenty, and whoever gets the, uh, the top ten scored, that's the ten individuals that we start with. Um, maybe we do the interviews with the four council members and the, uh, my assistant, uh, on the ten, and then we get that narrowed down to five, and then as a council collectively, we can do, uh, the second phase of the interviews with those five individuals, so I kinda like that, uh, that recommendation that Councilmember Welsh. Councilmember Long?
Thank you. Yeah, I was pretty much gonna mimic what Bobby said, I really like the ranking idea. I think ten is a good number. I did wanna clarify, uh, with those that did make that statement, though, that whether they were intending on doing the ten plus the two additional, or whether we were gonna incorporate those two additional into that final ten.
Yeah, it's my understanding, and, uh, uh, Ms. Sanego can clarify, is the two individuals must have a interview.
Correct.
Or do they just need to be a part of the ranking process?
Nope, the, uh, an interview, and, uh, but they may end up being part of that ten, and if for some reason they're not part of that ten, they would be added into that, so, uh, maybe, uh, twelve. I think you're, I don't want you to get stuck on ten, I mean, if, if, if clearly eight come out in your, we look to the rankings that you all provide, and, you know, we look through to see how many ones, ones, twos, twos, et cetera, if you've got eight that are clearly to the top, and then we add the other two, and again, those two may be part of the eight, uh, we can get you somewhere. I, I could see out of the twenty, it sounds like, uh, one of the council members has already looked through a little bit, and wouldn't, by the applications, could see that there were maybe ten that rose to the top that is of preference, so, we can keep around eight or ten in mind as to what looks...
So if we do a ranking of ten, and just for argument's sake, you have one of the individuals, say the, the veteran makes the top ten, but the person who is in-house doesn't, then we would have eleven interviews.
Correct.
So that's, would be my understanding of the process.
So I understood that, I just didn't know if we were gonna try to pick ten, that they weren't, didn't happen to be, then we would be, yeah, okay, or back them in into the ten. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd?
I just wanted to say, um, I'm not one of the council people that's doing the interviews, but, uh, I'm available if for some reason, um, it's too time-consuming for one of the council people to be able to handle it. Uh, I just wanna put my name in that, uh, I have no problem interviewing.
Okay, so we'll maybe have you as an alternate for some reason if, uh, if, if a council member, for some unknown reason, is unavailable.
Yeah, doesn't have the time, because it's a, a lot of interviews.
Okay.
That I could, uh, fill in.
All right. So I don't think we need a motion on this, I think we just need to have a consensus, that's the direction we're moving forward in, uh, so we're all pretty clear, so, um, I think we have that consensus, um, moving forward, so that's how we'll, uh, we will move forward, and we will get HR to assist in, uh, with, uh, with this process, and, uh, I think the only other thing that I can think of, I think we need to have a deadline, uh, for those, uh, for that ranking, uh, so maybe that's one last thing that we need to talk about, uh, come up with a date that it must be submitted, uh, to, and is that something that we, uh, do we wanna submit those rankings to you?
Yes, I think if you get them submitted to, uh, Dave Anderson, just you can, uh, email them directly to him, and it would be, you know, one through, you could do one through twenty, or one through fifteen would be appropriate, uh, because then we'll pick out whatever you would give to us, we'll look through that to see what's the top ten, and, um, uh, it's Wednesday, right? So you've got Thursday, Friday over the weekend, do you want until next Tuesday, next Wednesday? That's really up to you, there's four of you who are looking through them, um...
Councilmember Nelson might not be able to meet any deadline, actually, it's just a...
Yeah, no, there's a issue there, so we'll have to, uh, if, if that's the case, and I guess, um, we'll have Councilmember Shepherd be the alternate, but, you know, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, and next week.
One week is enough time.
Yeah, so how about by the end of business on Wednesday, uh, by four o'clock?
Sure, nope, that's excellent, we'll work on your timeframe, and we'll take it from there, and we'll have that within short order, and then we'll work with your office as office manager and con to get them set up and, um, to do the first round with the four, uh, those first four council members to do the Zooms, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. All right, that sounds like a plan moving forward. All right, the, uh, next, uh, topic of discussion, uh, I brought this up, uh, a few weeks ago about, uh, having an assistant, uh, office manager, and I think, uh, uh, I provided you and along with the city clerk, a, uh, revised, uh, job description, I work with the HR department in developing this. Basically, what I did, uh, if you notice in some of the changes, is more of a managerial type, uh, role, uh, for an individual as an assistant, uh, office manager, and we outlined some job descriptions, uh, in working with, uh, HR, uh, with those jobs descriptions, it would elevate, uh, that particular job classification from a MB one oh eight, uh, which is the existing, um, classification to a MB one oh nine, uh, it's a difference of about, uh, if you look at the starting salary, a difference of about, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, for that change. Uh, I think what I am looking for tonight is just an approval for the job classification, not necessarily who that individual may or may not be. I think first, uh, we have to approve the job classification, and then, uh, in another meeting, then we can have a, uh, a discussion on the individual that will fill that role, so that's kinda what I was looking for tonight, and I'll, uh, open the floor up for, for any discussions that, that you may have. Councilmember Cosdine?
I am happy with this, it looks good.
Any other, uh, discussions? Uh, we will probably, uh, need a motion for this, Madam City Clerk, since we're developing a new, uh, job classification. Madam City Attorney, I'm sorry.
Uh, yes.
Okay. So, uh, we will need a motion to establish, uh, this particular job classification, um, and, uh, and then we'll need a vote on that as well.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, Madam City Clerk, we have a motion and a second on the floor, could you call the roll, please?
Shepherd?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosdine?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
And, Madam City Clerk, in our next council meeting, voting council, regular council meeting in two weeks, if you could add this, uh, agenda item, uh, again, and we'll have a further discussion on it from there.
Certainly.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we don't have any listed petitions of council, uh, which is nine F's, so we'll move on to, uh, nine G, follow-up items from city management. Uh, G one is water quality update, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's time for your regular update on water quality issues affecting the city of Cape Coral, and so I'm going to ask the public works staff led by, uh, Public Works Director Michael Ilchisen to the podium to, um, go over today's, um, salient facts. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Mike Ilchisen, Public Works Director. I have one correction, uh, for the CM's introduction, tonight's water quality update will not be regular, because with me, I have seventy-three page Army Corps of Engineer permit for our bubble curtains, was received this Sunday. So, what does that mean? That means we're one step closer, we, we need our DEP permit now to send the divers in the water, um, but it is, it was a, uh, a year in the making. Last year in May, we submitted it, in June, it went to NIMPs, and so here we are, a year later, with our Army Corps of Engineer permit to, to do the in-water work. So I'm happy to see some of you all smiling and cheering, cheering with me as well. Um, just, uh, to continue on the update, we have, uh, we've started the directional boring from the electrical cabinet, so we are basically getting everything prepared, so as soon as we get that DEP permit in place, we'll be able to start the construction of the in-water side. So if there are any questions on that, I will field them, if not, I'll let Maya take over the losem.
Councilmember Hayden?
So, Mr. City Manager, was this your surprise for me?
Yes, uh, Councilmember.
Okay.
So, just for full disclosure, I...
Full disclosure?
Full disclosure, I told, uh, several of you that I, I was sitting on information, but, uh, I was, uh, waiting till Wednesday to share that news with all of you.
So, Mike, you get, you get one thumbs up.
Okay, right, so, you know, well, and it was interesting, because we did put an update in the water quality memo, and I didn't get any calls, so I didn't think anybody got to that level of detail, so it was, but it was good, so we're, we're excited, staff's excited, we're, we're planning to, to get, get in the water and, and do the work, we've been communicating with the vendor who's gonna, to, uh, help us actually, you know, set it up, build it and, and deploy it, so...
Can you, can you kind of, um, maybe relay the conversation that we had, as we talked about, should we get maybe the DEP permit in a couple of weeks, hopefully, how things would back up? How long would it take to install the curtains, finish the electrical work, put the compressors in, and when we think everything might be operational pending that permit?
Sure. So, um, what we have been planning, based on the installation of the one that went in the water down at the Mandolin Canal, was basically two days of in-water work for each, uh, curtain, uh, there are nine of them, um, so we're, we're looking at basically, you know, twenty days there. Um, we have, um, on the upland portion, I think nine of ten are, are basically, uh, complete, uh, some are waiting the electrical inspection, and once that gets, uh, passed, then LCEC can actually put a meter in, uh, I think, s, if I recall, last week, it was like seven of ten already have the meter in place. So those ones where the meter have, has already been set, the electrical inspection has passed, now they're doing the directional drill from the cabinet to the seawall, and then that basically, uh, through that point of connection in the seawalls, where we will connect the in-water portion. Um, so, you know, I would say, you know, there's roughly twenty days of in-water work, uh, we're getting into rainy season, so there, there may be some times when the divers have to come out of water due to lightning, uh, it would be reasonable to, to say, you know, forty-five to sixty days from, from that permit. You know, if we were to get that in January, when there's no lightning and no rain, no issues to deal with, we could probably have it done within the twenty to thirty days, but I, uh, just need to be cautious with, you know, lightning at this time of year.
So we should be able to salvage at least, uh, hopefully, most of rainy season?
Oh, yeah, so, well, you know, obviously, again, you know, I have to wait on the DEP, um, but, you know, we don't typically start, you know, Maya will come here, and as you know, she tells you when the, when they start opening the floodgates, per se, uh, usually doesn't happen towards the end of rainy season, so, um, if they keep on with that, we will have, we will have these in place, most likely before that happens.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Cosdine?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the DEP issue, can you talk to me about a timeline? I know we don't know, we can't read the future, but what are we expecting?
So what happened with the DEP is, there's two sites that the D, and they're, they're all the way at the northern end, so it's like Chantry Canal and the Four Mile Cove Canal. Uh, the DEP, their comments to us, uh, actually were unfounded, they, they believed that the places where we were putting the bubble curtain were in, uh, state sovereign submerged wetlands. So our city surveyor and, and our team got together and said, no, we have the plats, we have all the issues, so they, they took the data from the state, from the Florida DEP lands and mapping, and actually platted out for them, and then basically had to prove the state was inaccurate, and the state then agreed. So we have it in writing from the state, uh, that they had an error in what they believed was the boundary of the city, uh, so the reviewers have said they agree that they're gonna, but now they have to go through the formal process of amending that on their side, because the permit reviewer can't release it until that's correct, otherwise it will look like on paper that they issued it in state sovereign submerged lands without a sovereign submerged land lease. So they're working on their end to correct their error, and as soon as that happens, then the, the reviewer can release the permit. So it, we don't have any outstanding items pers, open to, to, to deal with, it's just waiting for them to resolve their, their issue.
That makes sense, and then that has nothing to do with the small-toothed sawfish issue, which is resolved, right?
That's all resolved, all covered in the Army Corps... That's all resolved, all covered in the Army Corps permit. All the endangered species stuff. There's stuff in there about right whales, turtles, seagrass, manatee strike, you know, strike avoidance measures. So, all the endangered species stuff is covered in the Army Corps. The state lands do different types of review.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for the update, Mr. Ilchizen, and I know you have some additional comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Maya Robert, Public Works Director, oh, oh my. So, there's been a lot of heavy rain in the past few days. Lake Okeechobee hasn't raised its stage much, but the release have actually been decreased by the US Army Corps of Engineer at S-79. Mike mentioned with the rainy season. So what will happen on this rainy season, I cannot predict what the Corps will decide, but what affects us most during the rainy season is really basin drainage from the basin, from the rain. The Corps is just an added flow. If there's an imminent hurricane or storm, we might get more flow if they need really to get the lake down, but we don't anticipate this happening this year, because we managed to get the lake low. But what we have to worry more about is basin drainage from the rain, and this, we cannot, we cannot stop this. So with that, with all the rain and the nutrients that have been draining with the rain, we started staff surveys for algae tomorrow, and we're carefully watching bloom potentials on the lake. So far, nothing of Kalu Sahachi on the lake, and that's it.
And it looks like the lake, we're about a foot lower than we were this time last year, a little over a foot, so I guess we're in a little better shape this year than we were last year. So hopefully, that'll help us as well. Any other, any other discussion? Okay, thank you for the update. Okay, item 10 is ordinance and resolutions. 10A is public hearings. We have ordinance 32-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 32-22, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from commercial slash professional to single-family land use for property described as Block 3, lots 8 through 27, Coral Point Unrecorded Subdivision. Property located at 1642 through 1768 Coral Point Drive, providing severability and an effective date.
Good evening. For the record, Wyatt Daltry, Plan Team Coordinator with the city's Plan Division. My credentials may be obtained at the city clerk's office. This is a privately-initiated future land use amendment that the city subsequently joined afterwards to include additional properties, from CP, commercial professional, to the single-family residential future land use, properties located on Coral Point Drive. The properties are located in southeastern Cape Coral, just east of Del Prado, just north of the Super Walmart, which the following maps will better indicate. This is an aerial of the 10 properties in question, again, just directly north of the Super Walmart development. As you can see on the aerial, several scattered single-family residences are located north and east of the property, commercial developments on the west and to the south. The Coral Cove Development is located further to the south and southeast. Here are the current and proposed future land use maps. Subject parcels that you see here would be changed, if this is approved today, to the single-family residential designations indicated in yellow. Again, on these maps, red indicates commercial, so commercial to the north, just across the street, to the west and to the south. Brown's multifamily, the Coral Cove Development. Quick background, 10 properties, seven of which are developed, single-family homes, been CP since 1989, which was the original adoption of the future land use map. They've still had a single-family residential since that time. The idea back then was that people would either assemble the properties, or rezone on their own, or have someone, some angel investor purchase the properties and develop a commercial development. This amendment was originally brought forward by Habitat for Humanity for one property, but noticing that this issue of several properties with a inconsistent land use zoning, the CP and the R1, staff decided to expand that to the 10 properties in question. One of the reasons why this hasn't developed with commercial properties is that a wall separates these properties from the Walmart Super Center to the south. Well, this really just negates any opportunity for assemblage. Through the comprehensive plan, we performed analysis by analyzing Policy 1.14, which real, which revealed that these properties are very weak candidates for commercial, future commercial development. To conclude, this amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval. At the April 6 meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. We've received no public correspondence, and I'll stand by for any questions.
I'll now open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 32-22, please come forward. See a none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 32-22?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any council discussion? See a none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long. Six ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 34-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 34-22, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the city of Cape Coral. By rezoning property described as lots 22 through lot 25 of Del Pine Manor, an unrecorded plat lying in Section 5 Township 44 South, Range 24 East, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein, from general commercial and two-family conservation, those are Lee County designations, to commercial corridor zone. Property is located at 1356 Del Pine Drive, providing severability and an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Chad.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. For the record, Chad Boyko, Principal Planner with the city's Plan Division. This is ordinance 34-22. It's a privately-initiated rezoning case. The owner of this is Hally Properties LLC. The location is 1356 Del Pine Drive, and it's a little over one and a quarter acres. It's currently within the urban services infill area, as this was recently annexed into the city of Cape Coral, and then the applicant's request is a rezone from two Lee County designation zoning districts, which are general commercial and two-family conservation, to the commercial corridor district. Air map, site is one parcel, arrows a little bit, they combined this, so if you're seeing a couple of lot lines, it's a little bit different. It's now one parcel. It's been combined by the new owner. It's at the intersection of Pine Island Road and Del Pine Drive. It's developed, it was developed with a commercial building. It's now been abandoned, or that it's vacant in that, in that sense. It was annexed into Cape Coral earlier this year. Couple of months ago, you approved a future land use map amendment to the Pine Island Road District. It's pretty much surrounded by commercial development to the north, to the west, and except for a couple of scattered single-family homes in this little strip of land, which most of them are still within Lee, unincorporated Lee County, there's even commercial development that extends further along Pine Island Road. The applicant is seeking the rezone to develop the property with a commercial use. They currently have a site plan that is currently within the city's review system, and basically, it's just a pending approval of this rezone in order for this to be approved. The current zoning of the property, indicated in the gray, since it's Lee, unincorporated Lee County zoning, is this combination of two zoning districts, like we mentioned, and then the proposed zoning would be the pink commercial corridor district. And you would see that, for the most part, the surrounding properties all share that similar land use and zoning per this map. There is one parcel that is still within Lee County that is located to the east of this property, and then a couple of properties that are south that are still also located within unincorporated Lee County. We did our analysis per the land development code. We found that the proposed district is compatible with the current Pine Island Road District future land use. Staff finds that with this zoning district, you're gonna have commercial uses. They've actually already proposed an auto repair store on this site. That use will be consistent with this area, and also, most of the surrounding property that is currently within the city of Cape Coral, being that you have large-scale, big-box retail centers and other sort of general commercial uses that are around there. Staff finds that the use proposed and the use proposed in this district are similar to what you find within this strip along Pine Island Road. The rezone will help serve a need for more commercial land within the city of Cape Coral at appropriate locations. This does have frontage along and at an intersection of a major arterial, so we find that it'll be suitable for those commercial uses. Staff finds that, given that even, you know, you have the commercial use there, there is a couple of residential areas that are nearby. However, there's already an existing amount of commercial that, if there is any sort of impact, the small nature of this rezone will be minimal compared to what you have with a Walmart, with a Walmart, neighborhood Walmart, and a Supertarget that's already in that location. We find that the impact won't really be that much. The, based on the zoning and the small size of the site, you're not looking at much in the way of traffic impacts or noise impacts from this zoning district. Then we also looked at the siting criteria for the commercial corridor district. We found that the site is adjacent to areas already developed with the commercial corridor zoning designation. We also find that it abuts commercial corridor zone districts to the south, to the east. The property is not part of a large tract that's already zoned corridor, although staff notes that the site was recently annexed in the city of Cape Coral, so that limits some assemblage opportunities in that aspect. It is not over three acres or more, which is one of the siting criteria. It's a little over one and a quarter acres, as we mentioned. The property has over 170 feet of frontage along Pine Island Road. It doesn't quite meet that standard, but it's pretty close to the 180 that is sought when seeking rezone to commercial corridor. And then lastly, staff's recommendation is approval of the proposed rezone based on analysis with our land development code and also the comprehensive plan. And then this was heard by the hearing examiner a couple of months ago, and she also recommended approval of this rezone, and there's been no correspondence, and I'm here for any further questions.
I will now open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 34-22, please come forward. See a none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 34-22? So moved. Sorry, second. Okay, any discussion from council? Okay, Madam City Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. We'll move on to ordinance 37-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 37-22, an ordinance naming the Gator Circle Neighborhood Park, Gator Trails Park, providing severability and an effective date.
Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, there is no presentation on this item, because we have previously discussed it.
Okay, I'll now open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 37-22, please come forward. See a none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 37-22?
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 40-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 40-22, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Madison Square LLC, a Florida limited liability company, for the lease of a portion of property owned by the city of Cape Coral. Property located at 4816 Chester Street, providing for severability and an effective date.
Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, this item before you is a short-term lease to allow Madison Square LLC to occupy a limited space within the city's Chester Street facility for the purpose of interviewing applicants for their new Madison Square senior housing project that is currently under construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 40-22? Please come forward. See a none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 40-22?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any council discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
We'll move on to item 10B, introductions. We have ordinance 41-22. Madam City Clerk, please read title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 41-22, an ordinance providing for the annexation of parcels of land lying in a portion of Section 20 Township 44 South, Range 23 East, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein, providing for redefinition of city boundaries, providing for city of Cape Coral Fire Department and Utility Services, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be May 18, 2022.
Any staff or council discussion? See a none. We'll move on to ordinance 42-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 42-22, an ordinance providing for the annexation of a plot or parcel of land described as a portion of Lot 22, tract 2, T.W. Stevens Estate, lying in a portion of Section 19 Township 44 South, Range 23 East, Lee County, Florida. Said plot or parcel of land being more particularly described herein, providing for redefinition of city boundaries, providing for city of Cape Coral Fire Department and Utility Services, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be May 18, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council? See a none. We'll move on to ordinance 43-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 43-22, an ordinance naming the new Cape Coral Fire Department Fire Boat, Marine 9, B.C. Todd Regone, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be May 18, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council? See a none. We'll move on to item 11, reports. Councilmember Shepherd, report.
Yeah, I won't be able to attend Wednesday, May 11 meeting. I'll be out of town, but I will attend virtually.
Okay. Councilmember Welsh, report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just report that I attended the ribbon cutting or uncoupling of the new Fire Station 12, that's located in District 5, who was honored to be there today, and as it was an honor to be there when we unveiled Fire Station Number 2 last year. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosden, report.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I attended the Nortec Boat Dealer Meeting Dinner last week with the mayor and Councilmember Hayden, and it was a really good event. And this morning, I attended the Transportation Disadvantaged Local Coordinating Board meeting, which is the committee of the MPO. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
Thanks, Mayor. We had our final meeting with the current group of youth council members. I thank the seniors for their hard work over the year and wish them the best in the next endeavor of their life. All of them are going off to college, at various places, University of Florida, FGCU. And as I said earlier, we'll look forward to the incoming seniors and their work with the new incoming juniors. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Long, report.
No report, Mayor. All right. My report is fairly brief compared to usual, but on 4/22, I was a guest speaker at the appreciation luncheon for the volunteers for all of our boards, committees, commissions, and stakeholders group. As I had mentioned there at that meeting, they play an important role for their volunteerism here in our city. So, because of COVID, we weren't able to have those luncheons here the last couple of years, so I just wanted to tell Madam City Clerk, you did a great job, and I was glad that we could have that luncheon again.
Thank you.
Also, I was a guest speaker at the Cape Coral Republican Club on 4/26. On 4/28, I met with Commissioner Ruane, the Lee County Commission, along with some investors, actually, it was a real estate broker that had some investors. that had some investors out of the country, Dubai, and a few other countries. I guess, basically, they were looking to see what type of opportunities we, we have. I kind of had those discussions with Commissioner Wayne, and also directed the real estate broker to contact our Economic Development Department as well. On 4/29, I'm sorry, on 4/28, also, like Councilmember Cosd had mentioned, I attended the Nortech Dealer Meeting and Charity Check Presentation, where Nortech gave away $10,000 to a charity. So that was nice to participate in that event as well. Issued on 4/29 proclamation and participated in the 30th Annual Arbor Day Event. I wanted to thank staff for getting, getting that yearly event together. This year was a little different, because we incorporated the second grade class from the Oasis Elementary North to participate in that. So I think it made it a much better, better event this year. And also attended the grand opening that Councilmember Welsh had mentioned today on Fire Station 12. Glad to see that fire station up and running and open to serve our community, to lower the response times for the residents who live in that area. So as we mentioned today, public safety is one of our top priorities. So it was great to see this fire station open and up for business. And that's the report that I have. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the council is aware, the city is a party to eminent domain litigation entitled City of Cape Coral versus Bunch, case number 20-CA-2581, and City of Cape Coral v. Roy, case number 20-CA-6082. Accordingly, pursuant to Section 286.011, subsection 8 of the Florida statutes, I am requesting that the city council convene in a closed attorney-client session to discuss settlement strategies. If this is acceptable to the city council, the session may be scheduled for Friday, May 20, 2022, at 1:00 p.m.
Okay. So that would be Friday, the date again, the 22nd, is that what I heard?
May 20.
May 20.
At 1:00 p.m.
At 1:00 p.m. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. I am gonna be out of town that day. I can try my best to call in remotely, but I would like to be excused from it if that is the only day.
Madam City Attorney, can council participate telephonically if, if needed?
I believe that he can participate telephonically, if that's the council's pleasure.
Or at least give Councilmember Welsh that opportunity if, if it should be available.
Yeah, it should be available if, you know, I'm able to call and get reception where I'm at, so it should be fine.
All right. Any other comments from council? Everybody okay with that date and time? All right. And if, Madam City Clerk, if you could put that on our calendar, please?
Yes, sir.
Any other items, Madam City Attorney?
I have nothing further.
Mr. City Manager.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Then, time and place of our next meeting is a committee. The whole meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 11, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. Here in council chambers, is there a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.